Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for June 10, 2014. We'll begin with the special order calendar. Decision items, item number one, 457-56BZ, 152-154 India Street, Brooklyn.
Hello, good morning. Eric Palatnik on behalf of Adam Rothkirk.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number two, 192-96BZ, 1832-1854, 86th Street, Brooklyn.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number three, 178-99BZ, 889-73, 95 Bay Parkway, Brooklyn.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number four, 322-05BZ, 6969 Main Street, Queens.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. On behalf of the not-for-profit that this was acted upon, we thank you very much.
Item number five, 174-07BZ, 1935 Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik on behalf of Mrs. Safaro.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number six, 173-09BZ, 839-845 Broadway, Brooklyn.
Morning, Benjamin Stark of Goldman Harris for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number seven, 247-09BZ, 123 East 55th Street, Manhattan.
Hi, good morning, Sheila Pozon, Kramer Levin, on behalf of the applicant, Central Synagogue.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items, item number eight, 2496BZ, 213 Madison Street, Manhattan.
Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnik on behalf of Rothkirk, Rothkirk Inspector.
All right, I think there's one remaining issue, the banners were taken down.
Yes, which they have removed and they have photos of it, which we'll be submitting to you if you don't already have.
Right, but the brackets remain.
The brackets, yes, and then we'll find out.
The last photo that you gave us seemed to indicate that the brackets were still up. So then as soon as we renew you, your guys can go put the flags back up, which is not what we want.
Of course not, and I'll confirm that the brackets are down and we'll submit photos, graphs to you if the brackets are being taken down.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? All right, but I suggest that we close the hearing, we leave the record open for you to remove those brackets and provide us photographs. Can you do that in two weeks?
Yes.
Or three weeks, rather. We'll set a submission date of July 1st and we can vote this out on July 15.
Thank you.
Motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Item number nine, calendar number 186-96BZ, 145-21 through 25, Liberty Avenue, Queens,
Rothkirk, Rothkirk Inspector.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
You've asked for an adjournment?
Yes.
All right. If you can submit to us on July 1st, we can have the hearing on July 15th.
July 15th or 13th? I think thought last time you said 13.
Fifteenth.
It is 15th. I apologize. Thank you.
Item number 10, calendar number 160-00BZ, 244-04 Francis Lewis Boulevard, Queens, Vassalotti Associate Architects.
Is the applicant here? The applicant asked for an adjournment of three weeks, so we'll set the submission date for July 1st and we'll have the hearing on July 15th.
New cases, item number 11, calendar number 245-32BZ, 123-05, 101st Avenue, Queens, signed, present day.
Good morning, my name is Robert M. Blakeman. I'm the attorney for the applicant, 125, 123 dash 05, 111th Avenue in Queens. I have my client here, Michael Rasso, to answer any questions if there are any. And as far as the presentation is concerned, I believe in good faith we have supplied all the information that was requested and we're asking that this be renewed, this variance, rather, that was granted 10 years ago. And my client is the owner of the property and he's owned it for 50 years, over 50 years. It's a neighborhood repair shop, auto repair shop, no gasoline station pumping or any of that sort, just minor repairs.
All right, I know we had a few questions, Vice Chair.
Yes. From the photos that were submitted, it appears that there are more than four cars on the lot and the prior grant limited the number of cars on the lot to four.
Is that the exterior? Premises or interior? There's six in the interior.
On the lot, outside.
Outside?
Yeah.
We can remedy that, that's for sure.
But are there regularly more than four on the lot?
No, there shouldn't be. The premises are leased to an auto repair shop.
Right.
My client had operated for first 35 years.
Right.
And we can put them on notice that the restriction is for exterior parking spaces.
Also from the photos, it appears that the signage on the property exceeds that which was permitted by the prior grant.
No, all those signs have been removed. We put an affidavit in, there was a limousine sign that was up.
We're a bunch of.
By the tenants, we didn't put any signs up. The tenants put the signs up and we told them, "You can't do that." And they're all gone. We have an affidavit.
But the photographs that were submitted as a part of this application indicate that the signage exceeds that which was permitted. And I believe some of my colleagues visited the site and would attest to that.
Well, whatever pleases the board, we'd be glad to comply with. But to our knowledge, we've told every one of those signs that were on the comment sheet, take them down.
Okay, I think you need to demonstrate.
And we didn't put them up.
Just need to demonstrate compliance with the prior grant from the board.
All right.
Through photographic evidence.
We can do that, yes.
All right, Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Well, that was basically, one of my comments had to do with the signage and.
And to clarify the lot, right?
And to clarify the lot because of the excess signage that was actually visible when I went to the site. And I do know that it seems as if you might have an adjacent shop that isn't under your ownership that might also be an auto repair shop, and I'm not sure if some of the signage belongs to them. So it'd be great if you can clarify your lot boundaries.
Okay.
And as Vice Chair said, provide photographic evidence of the limited signage that you do have remaining, and it would be great if that also was coordinated with the plans and matched the signage that's on your plans.
All right. You want new photographs, is that it?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkson and then Commissioner Montanez.
Some of the cars on the site do not have license plates, and so I'd like you to clarify why that is. There's not supposed to be car sales on that lot, so I'm concerned that because you've got a number of cars that don't have license plates, that perhaps some sale of cars is being operated on the lot. So if you could clarify that for us and make sure that that's not.
Would a supplemental affidavit be okay? The owner?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Would a supplemental affidavit be all right for the owner? We come in from the island.
That would, but also an explanation as to why those cars are there and to make sure that there is no sale of cars going on.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Commissioner Montanez?
Yes, I noted when I visited the site that the, in the location where you have on your site planned for parking of four vehicles, you actually have a large panel truck parked. And that panel truck was there when I visited the site, it's also in the photographs, so it seems like it's a permanent fixture. I think that should be removed. It's adjacent to the residential property and I noted that the fencing really doesn't provide adequate screening to the residential property.
All right.
Also, when I did visit, I noted that some of the signage had been removed, excess signage, but the frame, the awning frame was still there.
Awning frame, all right.
Removed.
Any other questions?
I just had one rather minor point. The owner's affidavit says that the hours of operation are from 8 to 6, whereas the prior grant and the certificate of occupancy say 9 to 6. So, you know, I'm not terribly troubled by the extra hour, but it should be synchronized.
Well, I guess the reason for that was it's a neighborhood shop and people do bring in their cars and leave them there and they get minor repairs now, but they've been there 50 years. But if that's material, we'll change that, too.
Are there any concerns with the earlier hour?
I don't think it's a problem.
Okay, but it's just to clarify in your papers.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
And I, you know, the community board approved this, but they had a series of conditions. Can you, when you come back to us, can you respond to whether you've agreed to do the conditions that they've asked?
I thought we had responded to that with an affidavit of Mr. Rasso who's sitting over here.
All right, if it's already been responded to, that's fine, but.
I believe so, because we went down the list.
But, right, I think they had to do with, there was filing for new signage, there was, sidewalks should be repaired. Has that been done as yet or you're intending to do it?
Well, frankly, I was unaware that the sidewalks were mentioned in here.
Okay, I seem to have that up here. Would you just take a look at what the community board had asked for in their conditions and see if you comply?
All right.
Or you're willing to comply.
All right.
Okay. Are there, any speakers on this item? Any speakers? All right. We'll continue the hearing. Do you know how much time you would need to get back to us on these issues?
Well, with the summertime approaching, I'd, no.
I'm sorry?
I'm not hesitating because I've been in the hospital for a while, so I may have to get somebody to cover for me.
Oh, okay. Do you think if we gave you up to July 8th, you'd be able to, someone would be able to respond to these issues, the owner or someone?
Do you think you could make it a week after that? Could you extend that one further?
Yes, we, how about July 15th?
July 15th, yes.
Yes? So if you can submit the material to us on July 15th, then we can have the hearing on July 29th.
All right. Submission. 7:29 is the hearing. January 29th, right? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number 12, calendar number 4797BZ, 7802 Flatlands Avenue, Brooklyn, Sheldon Lobel.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC for the applicant, good morning.
All right, we had a few questions.
Sure.
Yes, the, your statement said that, I know you're trying to have the term removed here, but it said that the term has proven problematic for the property owner in various aspects of business administration, but there was no further explanation or, so can you give us some evidence of that?
Sure, we'd be happy to provide evidence. The discussion that we've had with the property owner is that right now the terms for the leases are not coincident with the term on the variance, and the term of the variance goes to 2018.
Right.
The building was built pursuant to the variance after 1998, so there's large institutions such as Rite Aid, a bank, et cetera, and so it's very difficult to allow those to coincide. It creates a lot of uncertainty as far as the lease terms. It creates a lot of uncertainty as far as financing, we're unable to refinance the property. So we're happy that this is clearly a commercial area, there was a rezoning in 2009, it was changed from a C22 to a C23. The community board understands that, the community board's vote was 36-0 in favor. So this is clearly commercial property. I think that the intended elimination of the term will really greatly facilitate that problem with a lot of these leases and also leave, if tenancies end and smaller tenants go out, will allow for more certainty in getting people back in and leaving the properties used as opposed to going dark.
That's understood, I think it sounds very practical, I just wanted the record to reflect the evidence of that.
Fantastic, we'd be happy to.
Also, there were five operational conditions that were on the prior grant and they were supposed to be on the CFO, but they somehow did not turn up there. I believe that those operational conditions are likely to be maintained, and if you could just address how you will make sure that this time they do appear on the CFO?
Of course.
And then a couple of smaller points. Is the trash for all of the businesses collected by the same company at the same time?
The property owner seeks to have uniform trash pickup. Rite Aid being a larger independent store and actually having several locations that are, for which our owner is the landlord, they operate with their own regional company. So it is a little problematic because they're unable to get on our schedule, they generate a lot more trash. As part and parcel of the variance application, when there are, after there's certainty in the lease term and we're able to renegotiate, Rite Aid has told us that they're going to renovate their property to include a trash compactor, which will have two beneficial effects. One will be to take more trash out of the trash area, to remove it from the site, and also to discourage people from the area who are right now dumping on the site. It'll just make the site a lot cleaner. So that's really kind of the situation as far as the pickup.
Okay, and I guess my last point was the signage, the prior grant said that all of the signage is only on the Flatlands Avenue frontage, but both in reality and on your sign analysis, you have Rite Aid signage on both 78th and 79th Streets.
Yeah, we can address that in the submission. I think there may have been some condition regarding the ability to place signage across from commercial stores on East 78th Street in the grant regardless. I understand we need to be in compliance and we'll make sure we're in.
I didn't see that.
That's fine.
I think it was pretty straightforward language, I limited it to Flatlands, so.
That's fine, well, of course we need to comply, so we'll provide evidence.
That's all.
All right, are there other questions? Yes, Commissioner Hinkson?
Yes, there seems to be some graffiti on the garbage enclosure on that wall along Flatlands, if they can get that removed. And there's an additional metal container just adjacent to that little garbage area, and it's not on the plan. Can you either remove it or explain what it is?
The graffiti, my understanding is that two to three weeks ago, all the graffiti was removed and we'll be able to provide photographs to the board. The containers, all the trash containers that are at the site are actually included on the plans. The other containers are storage containers, Rite Aid generates a lot of storage material which is basically stored in these containers, so they don't have refuse in them, they just basically are additional storage for Rite Aid.
But the one that's directly adjacent to that garbage area, I don't believe is on the plan.
It may be more of a.
So could you show it as a storage container?
I'm gonna take a look.
Or where, I mean, there might be others that I didn't see when I was there, but if you could just notate.
Okay.
All of the containers on the site?
Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
And this trash container was not in the trash storage area.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? Any speakers? All right, we can continue the hearing. How much time do you need?
I think to provide the evidence and make the necessary notation on the plan would take about two weeks.
Okay, so if you can submit to us on July 1st, we can have the hearing on July 15th.
July 13.
15.
15, sorry, thank you, Madam Chair.
Item number 13, calendar number 2801BZ, 663 through 673 Second Avenue, Manhattan, Hankman, Senate.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Calvin Wong, Chairman Serfitt. We understand that there are a number, a limited number of issues that were raised yesterday at the executive session, one related to the delays in construction and the commencement of future construction. At this point, construction delays were due primarily to financing issues, but now the public authorities law, as our papers indicate, has been amended and the MTA is now required to issue an RFP before our zoning lots can be fully merged and those air rights can be used for our development. We've been in contact with the MTA and they're preparing the RFP, but it's out of our hands. Once that RFP is issued, we're the only zoning lot that can utilize those air rights. I assume that we'll win the RFP. That's really what we're waiting for at this point. There was also.
Before you go away from that issue, your papers said that the MTA informed you that the RFP will soon be available to the public. Do you have a timeline on that?
We don't, we've been pressuring them for one, but they have not issued one.
Okay.
There was also a question related to the operation of the existing parking lot on the site. This is a previously existing parking lot that operates pursuant to a valid DCA permit. Obviously, this use will discontinue once construction commences, but we'll provide the board in writing with copies of the DCA license and a history of use.
Thank you, that would be helpful, I think, for the record.
Sure. It should also be noted that on June 5th, the Land Use Committee of Community Board Six voted unanimously to extend the time to construction.
All right, Vice Chair, you had another question?
I had another question. Part of this development plan, when it was approved 12 years ago, included a requirement that the post office.
Yes.
Be a part of the operation.
That is still the plan.
Are they still in, and if they're not, you have to come back to the board to amend?
Correct, that is still part of the plan at this point.
They are still in the mix? Is there an agreement to go forward with?
There was an agreement 12 years ago, there's been no talk of discontinuance of that agreement. So they are, they intend to occupy the first four floors of the proposed building.
And you can give us evidence of that?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? All right, if there are no speakers, I think we can close the hearing. We'll just leave the record open for you to make your submission. You can submit to us on July 1st, we can vote this out on July 15th.
Great, thank you very much.
Motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Item number 14, calendar number 34102BZ, 231 East 58th Street, Manhattan, Sheldon Lobel.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC for the applicant. Madam Chair, 231 East 58th Street is a property that received a variance from the board originally in 1967. Subsequent to that time, there was a renewal and currently it is under a condition where it is extended till 2023. There were two issues which the board primarily discussed at the executive session. One of them was for elimination of the restriction on eating and drinking. We do not seek that elimination. We are, we understand that it's part and parcel of the 2002 variance, that there was no eating and drinking.
There is a restriction?
There is a restriction, yes.
Okay, all right, because in the papers, I was confused, but in the papers, there was a lot of discussion in fact about how there are 23 other eating and drinking options, so you're not asking?
We're not seeking that.
Okay.
We are solely seeking an elimination of the term. The current issue is that there are businesses that were located at the property and there was a question as far as what the tenancy was at the site. The lighting business that was on the ground floor has gone out of business. So there is an issue right now because our term now extends to 2023 and we're in 2014. And similarly as with other cases, there have been issues as far as teneting the space and the ability of a tenant to rely upon a sizable lease, a 10-year lease, or even in certain cases, a five-year lease, when they know that the term is present and that they may not be able to occupy past that term. There's two things I would note here. The first is that in 2010, there was a lot five doors down from this property which similarly sought an elimination of a term and the board found fit to eliminate that term as well. And I can give the board the citation to that case.
That's 215 East 58th?
I believe that's correct. And in that case, essentially, the argument was that the factors which contributed to the initial variance contributed to the variance, to the removal of the term, they were still present, the hardship was still present, we feel that that's the case here, because it basically went to the quality of the building, the narrowness of the law and the physical nature of the building. The second thing I'd note is that on this stretch of East 58th Street between Second and Third Avenues, literally every ground floor uses a commercial use. So while we understand that this is an overwhelmingly commercial area and that there's even talk about rezonings and such, the truth of the matter is that right now we find ourselves at an incredible disadvantage, being in essence, one of the only operators who is unable to guarantee that there's going to be commercial use permitted beyond the current term of their grant.
Okay, questions and comments? Are there speakers on this item? All right, I just, I'm just looking at, I just want to be clear that you're saying that there's a condition.
That's correct.
Okay, because I'm looking at the last resolution and it doesn't talk about it, so was there previous resolution?
There was a 2002 grant which reactivated the 1967 grant, and then there was a 2012 extension to extend it to the 2023 term, and as part of the resolved paragraphs, it states, quote, that the only commercial use.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Eating and drinking will not be permitted, that's it.
Okay, all right, I made a mistake yesterday. Commissioners, any concerns about the elimination of the term, given that there's a restriction on eating and drinking?
No, we did it for another building down the street, I think it's a reasonable request.
Okay. Are there speakers? If there are no speakers, I think we can close the hearing.
Thank you.
And, yes, we can close the hearing and we can set the decision date for July 15th. Make a motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar, decision items, item number 15, 16413A, 307 West 79th Street, Manhattan, Slater Beckerman.
Raymond Levin with Slater Beckerman for the applicant.
Commissioner Brown?
Chair Shunivassan?
No.
Vice Chair Collins?
No.
Commissioner Hinkson?
No.
Commissioner Montanez?
No.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
No.
Is that a no?
That is.
Thank you.
Item number... Continued hearings. Item number 16, 26607A, 16021610 Avenue S, Brooklyn, the office of Frederick Becker.
Good morning. Lyra J. Altman from the Law Office of Frederick A. Becker. We did attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. I believe Commissioner Hinkson was the person who brought up the issue with the permits and the resolving of the fines. You are correct. I misspoke in my papers. I apologize. They are going to be providing the funding after the BSA approval to satisfy the fines, not after the DOB permits are issued. So, I apologize for that.
I was concerned because you may not even be able to get your permits without satisfying the fines.
You are correct. You are correct. It was an error in my statement, and I apologize for that.
Good.
All right. Can you finish that? Any other questions?
No. I think that was my basic question, is when they anticipated actually starting to pay the fines.
All right. So, it's afterwards that it wasn't about the timetable? Or is that the...
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yes.
The conditions of this site have been problematic for the neighborhood for a long time.
Understood. They are going to be...
And they only seem to get cleaned up when you have to come to us.
I will tell you, a number of the issues on the site have been provided by people other than our clients. I can tell you, my clients have not been dumping mattresses and other such materials in their own site.
I'm sure that they haven't, but nevertheless, they have an obligation to maintain it in a reasonable condition.
Understood.
Along with the public sidewalk.
They have cleansed up, and they do have every intention of doing this construction very quickly at this point, and that should resolve all issues.
You need to repair the sidewalks.
That is correct. That is part of the construction. They will be repairing the sidewalks on all sides of the site.
Will they be doing that prior to beginning construction?
I don't believe so because the machines are going to be coming in and out of the site, and when they do that, it will damage the sidewalk further.
But there are areas of the sidewalk that are damaged now that probably will not be incorporated into sort of the movement of machinery?
I will speak to them in any areas that they will not be driving machinery over. I will ask them to patch for the moment.
They should really repair them. It's not in great shape.
I will ask them to do that for any areas that they will not be driving over during construction.
Good.
Any other questions? Yes, the speakers on the side, please come forward. Give them three minutes.
This reads to the Bay News.
No, you didn't give it to me.
It shows the turned around for sale sign that the owners have...
You have to... Mr. Hayman, you have to go to the microphone.
One, two, three.
That's it. That's sufficient. Thank you. Say your name for the record.
Bud Hayman. How are you doing? Good morning, Commissioners. Bud Hayman, D-U-D-D-H-E-Y-M-A-N-M-D. I gave you a copy. It shows the for sale sign they put up, the number that leads to Mr. Kahans' office. The site's been up for sale for a long time. Okay. Now, what is the importance of good faith in legal matters? Since 2005, the owners have not demonstrated good faith. Examples, there was illegal asbestos abatement. They lied about their foundation being completed. A key page of the foundation blueprint was missing from the hard copy on the fish where my engineer tried to obtain it and has not yet been found. They are missing the concrete pouring slips. They never provided them. They never tested the concrete in the foundation and retaining walls, which makes me wonder how strong the concrete is, even if they promised the BSA they would do so when you gave them the first variance. They never paid their fines, but now they want to pay their fines if you approve them. Yeah, I believe that. They should have paid them months ago, years ago. They haven't maintained the property. They didn't maintain the sidewalk. Now, they present an affidavit apparently that says, "We have funding." But the for sale sign has been up for months, and it just miraculously disappeared the last couple of days. It was turned around after they first came to the BSA. They didn't want you to see that. Regarding case law that was cited by council yesterday, apparently, the BSA ruled no after like nine times giving a variance to somebody. Ten times they said no after first granting a variance to an owner who wanted to keep on maintaining the variance. Why even wait nine times with these fellows? They've been lousy neighbors. They've been bad actors. They haven't shown good faith. They've treated our neighborhood poorly. They terrorized the elderly people next to the lot. They tried to terrorize my mother into selling. They haven't... I don't think they've told the truth from day one, and they have not acted in good faith, and they should not be granted this hearing. It also destroys my neighborhood, my little micro neighborhood in Homestead. The neighborhood has a glut of condos that have not sold in Ocean Avenue. The people in my neighborhood need one and two-family houses. They have large families. That's what the market is. I don't know where their business plan is coming from. It's absurd. Why destroy my neighborhood? Why destroy my little block? They've had nine years. They've done nothing, and they have not shown any good faith whatsoever. I doubt they're telling you the truth now. I thank you for hearing me, and my neighbors thank you, and hopefully, we can get this resolved in favor of the neighborhood.
Dr. Hayman, if I may, I just wanted to make one point. Both your testimony and this newspaper coverage of this particular situation, this case, keeps referring to it as a variance. A variance... This is not a variance. This is a question of vested rights, and it's an important legal distinction, and the board's authority to act with regard to a variance is different than the board's authority to act with regard to vested property rights. And the mere fact that a property owner established to this board's satisfaction that the rights had vested under the prior zoning, the fact that that person now wants to sell their property is not an issue that would legally permit this board to vote against it, and I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
I appreciate that. You taught me something there. Of all the other reasons, I still don't think they should be granted any positive findings on their side.
Your position is clear. I understand that.
Preserving our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers?
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins, for clarifying that to Mr. Hayman.
All right. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, we can close the hearing.
Thank you.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Aldley Brown?
Aye.
We'll decide this on July 15th.
July 15th?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number 17, 80-11A, 848511A, and 10311A, East 9th Street, Manhattan, the office of Marvin Mitsner.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Marvin Mitsner for the applicant. I believe at the executive session, the board asked for some actual cost estimates for MDL compliance with Section 152, and we have. We did submit a letter to the board electronically last night, but I do have hard copies for And what the letter does is it contains cost figures for each of the discrete sub-paragraphs of 152, and clearly indicates not just the practical difficulty of meeting that MDL requirement, but also the unnecessary hardship in terms of cost. And I will state that if you look at the language of MDL 310, it is a rather low standard for... Because it uses the term "any unnecessary hardship" or "any practical difficulty." And I think when you look at the provisions that we've indicated, we've established that certainly. I know there were some other questions. I'm not quite sure the nature of those questions are dealt with, I believe, the spirit and intent of the MDL. But if you look at the language of MDL 310, it talks about provided the spirit and intent of the chapter are met. I think when you consider as a whole what we're asking for in this amendment to the prior approval, we're providing fire safety improvements to an existing building that otherwise would not have those improvements. And I think looking at it conceptually in that aspect, we're certainly meeting the spirit and intent of the MDL. This is a partial one-floor enlargement from a partial six-floor enlargement. If we were going from the fourth floor to the fifth floor and creating a fifth-floor enlargement, there would be no retrofitting requirement for the base building. And in return for that minor enlargement, we're doing substantial improvements to the building and making the building much more fire-safe than it ordinarily would be. And I think that certainly meets the spirit and intent of the MDL.
Commissioner Montanez, you want to comment on that?
Well, I don't really agree with you. I feel the MDL specifically requires fire stopping and compartmentalization of the units so that the fire does not spread, the structure is protected, and the smoke does not spread. I don't think the sprinklers are a Band-Aid for all of that. And I think the MDL clearly is... The intent is that if you're going to enlarge these buildings, then a full rehabilitation of the structure is required. I mean, considering the density, the age of the buildings, these buildings were constructed in the 1880s. I forget exactly.
No, 1900s.
1900s? But they're about 110 years old. You know, I went to the site. All I can do is look in the front doors. I can visibly see stairs sagging about, you know, two inches across the narrow width of the existing stairways. I mean, to me, the stair carriages are weak. I saw two buildings where there was trash in the hallways, and, you know, I noted that I think it's 331 had permits posted for renovation, and it was complete interior renovation of two apartments, the entire floor. And, you know, I would think if that could be done over time, then the fire stopping could be installed, and then the structure could be enlarged. But I do feel the fire stopping is an important aspect of the renovation of these buildings.
Well, I think the fire stopping is not a retrofitting requirement. The fire stopping provisions really are intended for construction of buildings. It certainly is a practical difficulty and a hardship to attempt to retrofit fire stopping in an existing tenement building. And I think that's the standard under 310. I think we've met that standard. And I think when you look at the fact that we're adding a partial non-combustible sixth floor, and we're taking a base building that otherwise would not require anything, these tenement buildings do not require retrofitting, and yet, we're doing it. We're doing a lot of retrofitting. Sprinklers have been known not just to help in fire safety, but they prevent the propagation of smoke. So, they are... The primary means are protecting these old buildings, and we're doing that. We're also adding fire-rated walls. We're doing non-combustible material in the stairs. We're doing some reconfiguration of it. We're doing what we can do practically, considering the fact that this is an occupied building, and it's an old law tenement, and all we're adding is a partial sixth floor. I think it's a reasonable request, and I think it meets, more importantly, it meets the standards of 310.
Well, my concerns have to do with a fire that, you know, would be perhaps originated behind a wall, where there is a cavity with combustible material, old lath and plaster, where it can travel quickly, and the building's not protected from the spread of that fire.
You have existing tenements, and this is an existing tenement that does not have any of those, any conditions that would prevent that from happening. And what we're doing is we're adding improvements that would benefit the building in such an event and prevent the spread of fire and smoke.
I believe a landlord-owner should do that no matter what.
Well, you know, I appreciate what you believe an owner should do, but the law doesn't require it. And the statute is pretty clear on what we're entitled and what we're not entitled to, and I think we've met that standard.
I do see that there is practice.
I just don't know what you're suggesting. I just don't know what you're suggesting.
I think that a more thorough renovation of the units should be performed before the building is enlarged.
That becomes an impossible standard because you're talking about a partial enlargement of a sixth floor, which has a certain cost attached to it and a certain benefit attached to it, and you're suggesting that in return for that, we have to basically improve the entire fire safety of the building, far beyond what MDL 310 would require for that approval. And that's just not a possible result.
A case in point would be...
And what you do then, and what you do then, is what you're suggesting is that we sacrifice the improvement of the base building, okay, if you don't approve this application, and make these tenements even more dangerous than they are now. And yet, we're trying to make it more safe than they are now. I don't get the juxtaposition.
There's the... The apartments that are being renovated, I believe that there is a violation in effect for gas piping and gas meters being installed in the public halls. That is considered a hazardous condition that has not been rectified. Can you clarify that?
Sure, I can. I'm unaware of that.
A lot of these things require that you get into the walls to change the electrical piping, the gas piping, the electrical conduits. It requires that you get into the walls.
I don't... Frankly, I don't quite understand what your point is.
Well, if you could review the violations...
We will review the violations. I'm unaware of them. We will take a look at that and see if there's anything there that we have to respond to. Be glad to do that.
And could you explain why there is trash stored in the hallways?
Absolutely.
Are there comments or questions? Does this two-hour fire rating that you're doing along the, I guess, the interior walls, but it's between the units and the public halls?
That's correct.
Does that also perform a function of fire stoppage?
Yes, it does. Yes, because we're increasing the rating to the point where it effectively creates a longer period of time in addition to the sprinklers, so that in case of a fire, the tenants can leave safely and leave the building safely, and the building is protected.
That's not fire stopping in the sense of, you know, the definition of fire stopping.
What is the definition of fire stopping?
Well, I guess my question would be, if you are applying additional sheet rock to that public hallway to make it a two-hour rated enclosure, then why wouldn't you then, from the public side, be able to access the space between, you know, your deck and the, you know, the joists, to be able to then include some sort of fire stopping as well as, you know, at the floor? Because your argument has been that you can't get into tenant spaces, but since you're already sort of doing work on that public side, why wouldn't you be able to, you know, to then include fire stopping on those walls between the public and the tenant space? That wasn't clear.
If... Okay. We can clarify that.
Are you talking about the ceilings and the floors?
Yes.
Okay.
So, in other words, he's already opening up the wall.
So, we're just talking about the public areas where you don't have to enter into that?
On the public areas, what we're doing...
He's already in there. So, there wouldn't be a reason why...
Well, all we're doing is adding sheet rock. We're not really going into the walls. All right? So, what you're suggesting is we now have to do some demolition work in a public hallway in an occupied building. I mean, we can consider that, but I think we still have...
Because I think you're going to have to do some of that demo anyway, considering that, you know, you've got plaster and lath, and now you're coming in, you know, with board. You're going to be doing some demolition. You're opening up the wall. It's just, that's how you do it. So, you know, so if you could answer that question, because I understand the pushback you're giving to Commissioner Montanez, but I think that you may be overstating what you actually would have to do.
Well, we'll be glad... I understand what you're saying. We'll be glad to consider it. I don't know specifically exactly what would have to be done to satisfy the fire stopping requirements in the public hallway. I just don't know the extent of demolition and construction.
I understand.
But we'll look at that. And if it's reasonable, obviously, we'll suggest that as another fire safety measure.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Speakers on this item? Yes, please come forward. Say your name for the record.
Dario Quintez for Councilmember Mendez's office. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'll be reading a part of the letter that she's submitting for the record. Again, I am writing to voice my opinion to the pending applications to amend the earlier grant of waivers to the New York State Multiple Dwelling Law. That would permit rooftop addition to each of the above caption premises, as in the calendar items. Attached is my previous written testimony that outlines my objections in details. Once again, the owner has not explained or provided any documentation to explain why strict compliance with the MDL cannot be met and/or what unnecessary hardship would be entailed in doing so. I urge the board to reject the owner's request for a blanket waiver of Chapters 5 and 6 of the MDL, and respectfully request that the board consider whether a waiver or variance should be granted with respect to each and every individual MDL provision as applicable to these four buildings. My constituents, including these residents of these four buildings, deserve nothing less. Thank you for your time and consideration. And we would like to have a copy from the applicant's attorney regarding the submission documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other speakers on this item? All right. If there are no other speakers, we can continue the hearing. How much time do you need?
We don't need much time. We can have a response in a week.
All right. Well, we'll say July 1st for a submission date, and then we can have the hearing on July 15th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
New case, item number 18, calendar number 4507A, 1472 East 19th Street, Brooklyn, Eric Palatnik.
Hello. Good morning, Eric Palatnik. Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnik.
Any questions for the applicant? I know Commissioner Otley-Brown.
Yes, I would love it if you could make the statement more comprehensive, so that you don't have to search through past resolutions and all the other documents in order to get the basic information, which is work done, money spent, serious loss before the rezoning, the fact that there is no additional work after the rezoning, if you can throw that information into the statement.
Be happy to scull that out of you, be happy to.
All right. Any other questions?
I just had a concern that the site was going to remain idle for another number of years.
Oh, no, that's not the case at all. There's a new, the reason we're prompted to be here now is there's a new owner on the, that has the property. When it was brought to your Board, you probably may not recall, the vesting application was originally for a doctor who started the application, and the application changed mid-process due to filings at DOP. And when it was done, it wasn't, no longer the medical office, so the doctor, that was what it was purchased for originally. So, it's been sold to somebody who's gonna be developing now, according to the Board's approval, and they're anxious to start, that's why we're here. So, we should be done relatively, they should be at work within the next year.
But you're still gonna have the community facility.
Yes, a portion of it, but it's not medical.
Any speakers on this item? Any speakers? All right, we can close the hearing.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
You can submit your papers by July 1st, we'll vote this out on July 15th.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, decision items. Item number 19, calendar number 27712BZ, 1776 East Chester Road, DeBronx, Roth group, Roth group inspector.
Also call 251, or separately. You can call them both, that's fine.
Item 20, calendar number 25113BZ, 1240 Waters Place, DeBronx, Roth group, Roth group inspector.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik on behalf of Roth group, Roth group inspector.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 21, calendar number 17013BZ, 21-41 Mod Avenue, Queens, Gonzalez, Saggio, and Harlan.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Jonathan Mason, Gonzalez, Saggio, and Harlan on behalf of the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
Item number 22, calendar number 23313BZ, 2413 Avenue R, Brooklyn, Law Office of Frederick A. Becker.
Good morning, Lyra J. Altman from the Law Office of Frederick A. Becker.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 23, calendar number 31613BZ, 210 Giralliman Street, Brooklyn, Slater and Beckerman.
With some trepidation, Raymond Levin, Slater and Beckerman on behalf of the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number 24, calendar number 31913BZ, 1800 Park Avenue, Manhattan, Eric Feinstein.
Good morning, Mitch Corby, with complete confidence and very little trepidation.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Item number 25, calendar number 33113BZ, 200586th Street, Brooklyn, Warshaw Bernstein.
Good morning, Josh Reinsmith for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 26, calendar number 7-14BZ, 1380 Rockaway Parkway, Brooklyn, Greenberg Trolley.
Good morning, Dan Eggers for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number 27, calendar number 1614BZ, 1648 Madison Place, Brooklyn, the Law Office of Lyra J. Altman.
Good morning, Lyra J. Altman from the Law Office of Lyra J. Altman.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 28, calendar number 20-14BZ, 312 East 23rd Street, Manhattan, Sandy Agnus Tum.
Good morning, Sandy Agnus Tum.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Continued hearings, item number 29, calendar numbers 21613BZ, 21713A, 750 Barclay Avenue, Staten Island, Rampula Associate Architects.
Good morning, Philip L. Rampula. I attended the review session yesterday, and discussion focused on the outdoor seating.
Yes.
The outdoor seating is in the bed of Barclay Avenue, and the owner of the property has received a license from the city to occupy it as an outdoor café only continuously since 1986. It's renewable every year, and he has renewed, renewed it every, every year. Historically, the outdoor seating location has been in the location shown on my plan, at the dead end of Barclay Avenue. And the, the reason for that is as follows: If we show the outdoor seating directly in front of the building, then in the summertime, when the umbrellas are open, the view from inside the restaurant is blocked. So, we were playing with that last night. Because of the flood hazard zone, we've lifted the building a little bit, but that becomes a function of not wanting to exceed the height of nearby residential houses, and to keep it at the height that it's at now. With, with the advent, or the contemplation by the Board, that no music will be allowed outside, the only thing that you would hear is the clinking of glasses and, and plates, and I don't think it's a, a big disturbance to any adjoining owners. So, we request that the location stay in its present position.
Any concerns? All right, Commissioner Montanez, you're satisfied. Any other questions? Any speakers on this item? All right, if there are no speakers, we can close the hearing.
Thank you.
Chair Shunyvassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Set a decision date for June 24th.
Oh, happy birthday to me. Thank you very much.
Item number 30, calendar number 25013BZ, 3555 White Plains Road, DeBronx, Warshaw Bernstein.
Good morning, Josh Reinsmith for the applicant.
You've asked to withdraw this application. No, it's applications withdrawn.
Thank you.
Item number 31, calendar number 250413BZ, 2881 Nostran Avenue, Brooklyn, Law Office of Marvin B. Metzner.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Marvin Metzner for the applicant. We attended the executive session, I know the Board had a number of questions, I'd like to address them as best I can. First is, there was a comment about our as-of-right single-family plan, to go out to the cellar. And I, I think the, the correct plan would show no cellar, we may have submitted one that does show it, but we'll correct the record, because that may have been a, a plan that was submitted in error. We'll address that. There was also a, a comment that the contractor cost may have encountered twice, or may have appeared both in the remediation report and in our cost estimate. We've taken a look at that, and the Board has corrected, and we will amend that and remove that duplication of, of cost. There, there is, there's also some comment about a 50% contingency cost in the remediation report. There is some reference to it, but the figure wasn't included in the cost estimate. I think it was simply an offhanded comment by the consultant, so it's not part of the equation, so I think the Board can ignore that. There was also some discussion about a lesser variance scenario, well, two, two different scenarios. I think there was a, a question about an as-of-right scenario without the hardship...
Yes.
...that the Board asked for. Okay, we can, we can prepare that for the Board. And secondly, there was a question about proposing a, a lesser variance. And I'm not quite sure what the Board was looking for. I believe that with respect to the as-of-right single-family, I think the Board may want us to include additional family, one-family house, that may need some waivers. We can do that, but again, if you look at, at what we've submitted as as-of-right, there isn't much room for more than, I think, one additional home, but we can show that, we can, we can do that analysis.
Right, well, I, I think I mentioned that, but you, you're asking for over 2 FAR, right? So, there's lots of FARs that are in between what's allowed as-of-right and what you're proposing. And I think, not necessarily to try and get a squeeze in another home, you could have a multiple dwelling as you propose right now.
Well, okay.
It's less FAR, less units, less construction cost overall, that could be feasible. Commissioner, you want to add to that?
Yeah, that was also, I had a related comment, which had to do with the fact that just taking the cellar out of the picture had reduced the construction cost to such a degree that the gap between the project cost and the project value really came down, although there was still a gap. And so, my comment had to do with perhaps increasing the density on the lot while still maintaining this type of as-of-right, low-density development, so increasing it just by an increment, rather than going to the type of multiple dwelling that is in your proposed, which is a different type of building structure with a large cellar, that of course is gonna create extra construction costs and exacerbate your hardship, and also rely on a lot of common space that isn't space that you can get income for. So, I felt that you could have a more efficient building that would probably increase the value, so that it evened out your equation, and sort of reduced the cost, increased the value, without having to go to such a degree that you had a 2.19 FAR. And then that, in response, allowed the Chair to give further guidance as to the types of alternative variances that she would like to see, in terms of, I believe, like, yeah, that the Board would like to see in terms of like a 1 FAR, I believe, was one of your options.
Right, it's a 1 FAR, 1.5, something that is lower.
Okay, we can, we can propose, I'm not sure exactly what we'll propose, but we can propose a lesser variance that's in that range of 1 to 1.2 FAR.
I think that a concern was that what you're proposing, because of the density and the scale of the project, is creating additional construction costs that then have to be offset by more units. So, it's, it's almost, I think this was what Commissioner Otley-Brown was saying, if the more density you put on the site, the more parking you have to provide, the parking cannot be put on surface, it has to go below grade, which is actually increasing construction cost. So, I think, going back to what she was saying right now, are there other alternatives which don't require you to do this kind of excavation, and still provide your parking, but because the density is lower, your costs will also reduce?
It is a balancing act, and we're, we're caught between a number of different hard places to get out of. You've got, you've got the remediation costs for the environmental, but you also have the shallowness of the lot. Considering its size, it's only 80 feet, it's not 100 feet. If we had 100 feet, like most other lots in the area, we could, we could do more surface parking, which would, which would then change the equation, but we can't do that, because we've tried. We've tried countless different arrangements of space to get the parking in. We've tried, we've tried underground and above ground, above ground, it just, it's a very difficult site to maneuver, considering the fact that it's only 80 feet rather than 100 feet.
Right, and certainly if you're trying to put in 20 parking spots, you're not going to be able to put them on-site, but I believe your multiple dwelling, your alternative that had like seven apartments, had seven spots, you didn't really have a problem putting the seven spots in the back. So, if you were gonna increase the density by a lower increment, perhaps to 10 or 11 units, you most probably would be able to fit that parking in the back as well, because it's another three to four spots, and you did have plenty of space back there for your seven. And so, you would avoid putting the cellar in, most probably, and could have contained your construction costs. That's why we would like to see that.
Well, I, I understand that, but actually, in fact, the seven is the maximum we could fit on, on, on surface. We've tried...
Because according to the plans, it looked like you still had some space.
I've asked the architect to squeeze as many parking spaces on surface as possible, and he says he can't get beyond seven. Matter of what he does, he can't go beyond seven. So, when you do, when you look at that now, now, now we have another equation to add to it, another balancing, because if all we can fit is seven, and, and, and we, we need to cover the remediation cost, you're still gonna get below grade for parking. If we split the below-grade parking between surface parking and below-grade parking, now we're talking about adding a ramp, and also providing access to the above, above-grade parking. So, that equation, then, it doesn't work. I mean, we've tried countless iterations, it's a difficult site for that reason. And we'll be glad to do another lesser variance scenario for you, but I, I would dare say, we're caught between these two, these two elements, and it's hard to, it's hard to find a solution that doesn't have a greater FAR than the 1 to 1.2. But we'll take a look at it, certainly provide you with that information.
All right, I know there were other comments. Yes.
I reviewed the remedial cost estimate, and there's a, I have questions of how the quantities were derived. As far as the as-of-right multiple dwelling and the as-of-right single-family, they both seem to have excavation below their footprint to a depth of nine feet. And then there's some additional excavation, and I just didn't understand where these numbers came from.
Well...
And, you know, it's, it's more than the building footprint, and, I mean, maybe the person who's doing the estimate can explain exactly where the quantities come from, how deep they're going, why. If it's a paved area, is it being treated then a landscape area, in terms of how deep they're excavating?
All right, I, I can have him clarify that, but just, from my understanding of it, generally, it's that, it's that the excavation that takes place under the existing building is treated, we try to be conservative and treat that differently, that any excavation has to take place below the footprint of the building. So, that's why you may have two different calculations.
I didn't understand why you had to go nine feet deep, for both the...
Well, because, because you have, the existing facility has a deep pit and other facilities below grade, and you've gotta dig to nine feet to, to, to remove all that. So, that, there's two elements, there's the, there's the excavation remediation necessary to eliminate the existing condition in the existing building, and then there's the excavation that goes along with what you're building. And those are two separate elements, they may overlap, but there's two separate elements.
Right, but I think you noted that some places you have to go nine feet, and other places you have to go two feet, is that correct?
Right.
Isn't there some way you could just sort of chart that out on a plan, so we can sort of understand how that works? It's not that hard.
But let me, to be honest, it's, it's, we've, we've done it that way because we felt it was a more conservative approach, but it, it'd be hard pressed to sort of define areas and why you're doing excavation, but we can try to outline it, we can try to outline it in a fashion that supports the numbers.
Right, but there's no reason, if you're saying that practically people will just go and excavate all nine feet over the entire site, I don't, I'm not persuaded by that. Seems they wouldn't do that.
Well, we're not relying upon that, that's exactly right, we're not doing that.
I know, you're not relying, so you, so there is some distinction, some areas have to be removed, then, I think you said, some areas with a tank, then it has to do with where the building footprint is. All we just want to understand is, if you can chart that out for us in a drawing, we'd be able to understand how the cubic feet was...
Fine.
...to, and then therefore how, how the costs vary.
Right, what that is, and you know what the assumptions are, because he gives us numbers, but you don't really know where they came from.
Okay, we can do that.
I just want to go back to the scenarios that I think Commissioner Otley-Brown was suggesting. Once you get into the variance portion, which is lesser variance, you have certain constraints that, which are lifted from what you can do as-of-right. So, as-of-right, you, your claim is you can only squeeze in seven cars at the rear, but that's because the depth is 80 feet, but you're also required to do the front yard. Your proposal right now has no front yard, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, in that context of lesser variance, there are options for you where you can provide maybe less front yard, and provide more space at the back, and therefore provide more surface parking. So, it's this idea that seven cars is all you can get, is under the as-of-right scenario,[1723.04] but not under any alternative scenarios.
Not quite, because under alternative scenarios, we still would propose, we would have to propose a building that occupied 50 feet as a double-loaded corridor and 30 feet in the back. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do anything with the front yard as it is. We'd still be constrained to the seven cars. I think that's a limit.
I don't, okay, I don't see how that's the case. Right, you have a depth, you have a length of how many feet? It's 170, right?
It's 170, I believe.
170 feet, right?
160.
160 feet, so if you have, yes, it depends actually how you're arranging your cars. Maybe you could show that to us, I don't know. So you're saying that buying the 10 feet in front doesn't really help?
Doesn't really help, because you're now, what you're doing is you're making the building on occup, you're changing the whole scope of the building. What we've shown as a 50-foot depth of building...
Right.
Is the minimum you have to have. And once you have to have that and the 30 feet in back, you've already taken the whole depth of the lot. So there's no maneuverability in there.
But that's only if you go to that type of a building with a common corridor, double-loaded corridor, but if you stick with a more simplified building, like the type that you have in your as-of-right, which is only 35 feet in depth, and you shift that forward 15 feet, that gives you a lot of footage in the back for parking. And you could even do some sort of an angle parking, because at that point you have 45 feet behind you.
Well, we could...
You need a minimum of 40 feet, right?
Right.
Isle and the depth...
And the depth of the corridor.
Okay, so if you provide five-foot front yard and then you provide 35-foot depth, does that give you 40 feet at the back?
40 feet. We'll take a look at that.
And you have this entire length.
Right.
If you look at that. Yes.
We could also seek a partial waiver of the parking, make it all.
Right, the parking waiver, that's another alternative.
I was just commenting that it's possible he had some more parking, but not all of the required parking, and amend your application to seek a partial waiver of the parking requirements.
Well, that has other ramifications, it's, we need parking in that area. It's not, it would destroy the project essentially if we couldn't do, we couldn't market it with the parking. That's a whole different scenario. That doesn't make the project viable from a marketing perspective. But we could take a look at that other scenario you mentioned, see if we can do some other type of arrangement with a front yard waiver.
Okay, why don't you take a look at that? Any other comments? There speakers on this item? Any speakers? All right, should we give you three weeks?
It's fine.
Okay, so July 1st, and we can have the hearing on July 15th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Item number 32, calendar number 27913BZ, 223 West 34th Street, Manhattan, Warshaw, Bernstein.
Josh Reinsmith for the applicant. In our last submission, we included all updated application materials that reflected the fact that this zoning lot was comprised of three tax lots. This actually included an updated radius diagram and an updated property list, and, or I'm sorry, property owner's list. And we sent out a new notice of hearing for today's hearing that reflected this new list, and that was submitted to the board on May 16th.
Okay, that's great, I just wanted to make sure you did that.
Sure.
And the owner's authorization also covers all three lots, or if you can just modify that, it's all owned by the same owner?
Yeah, the owner's authorization, which we submitted, lists all three tax lots, as well as the authorization from the fitness center operator, does not list all three tax lots, but it lists both building addresses.
Okay, that's good. Any questions for the applicant? Any speakers on this item? No speakers, we can close the hearing.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oddly-Brown?
Aye.
We've set the decision date for June 24th.
Thank you very much.
Item number 33, calendar number 28413BZ, 16842, Jamaica Avenue, Queens, Warshaw, Bernstein.
Josh Reinsmith for the applicant.
Any questions for the applicant? Any speakers on this item? No speakers, we can close the hearing.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oddly-Brown?
Aye.
We can decide this also on June 24th.
Thank you.
Item number 34, calendar number 28613BZ, 2904 Voorhees Avenue, Brooklyn, Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, we were pleased to hear that you were fairly comfortable with the application. I believe Commissioner Montanez raised an issue with respect to the closet that's upstairs on the second floor. And I had a chance to speak with the architect about it and have an explanation for you of what it's about, and we also put it in the form of a letter, which I'll pass up to the board just so you can have it for your records. The letter that I'm passing up essentially attests to the fact that the cellar level is prone to flooding, and although they have it in the plan to utilize it, it's really a ceramic floor and it's just as a toilet down there, as well as there's a boiler that's raised up a few inches off of the floor to accommodate the flooding when it happens. There's a sump pump down there and so forth and so on. So the idea behind the closet on the second floor is for their garments to be stored when, you know, if you have winter clothing or summer clothing, extra clothing, a storage area for their clothing primarily that's in a dry environment. There is an attic level in the home, that attic level is a pull-down staircase, which is not really readily accessible by anybody unless they're very agile. So that was the idea for it. There are no, there's no intention to turn it into a bedroom, we would have put it on the plans as that, there's no window for the space, as you could see.
Any concerns about that, the storage closet on that floor?
Thank you.
Are there any remaining issues? All right, any speakers on this item? No speakers, we can, we can close the hearing.
Thank you.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oddly-Brown?
Aye.
We can decide this on June 24th.
Thank you.
Item number 35, 31013BZ, 459 East 149th Street, The Bronx, the office of Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
Any questions for the applicant? Any speakers on this item? Okay, we can close the hearing.
Thank you.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oddly-Brown?
Aye.
We can decide this also on June 24th.
Thank you.
New cases, item number 36, 259 to 256 to 25913BZ and 260 to 26313A, Sheridan Avenue, Staten Island, the office of Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik. Again, we attended your review session yesterday, and we brought with us Ms. Barbara, excuse me, Barbara from Robert Paul's office, not Ms. Barbara. And she's here to talk to you, I believe that an issue was raised yesterday with the valuation of the site, and I think that the commissioner that raised the issue was correct, and Barbara's here to address that for you. I think that was the most substantive question the board had yesterday, or one of the more substantive questions. I think the second one was related to the Department of Transportation, which I'll address after the financials if that's acceptable.
Okay.
Barbara Cohen, Robert B. Paul's LLC. So on the site value in the comparable tables, they, the adjusted, the average adjusted number was divided by four instead of five comparables, so I went and made the correction, the, and I can follow up with a letter in the new pro forma, but essentially, the lower site value goes to the $68, down from the 85, and the returns get adjusted as well, but the bottom line is that the as-of-right is still a big loser, the alternative, single-family residential plan only goes up to 2.7. The community facility continues to be a big loser, and the proposed goes to about 6%, which makes also sense in terms of it being a buy-and-sell transaction. So I can certainly correct it and do a follow-up in a written...
Commissioner Oddly-Brown?
Yeah, it would be great if you could just revise the pages to reflect that so that it could just easily be analyzed really quickly.
Yep, will do.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Hi, Eric Palatnik again. I believe the other issues, or the issue that was addressed yesterday was the request from the Department of Transportation, I think it was discussed by Commissioner Montanez yesterday, for the widening on Sheridan.
Oh, in your proposal, what is the proposed width of Giles and what is the proposed, well, the paving, the paved width, the roadway width of Sheridan and Giles?
I will find out what the exact paved roadway width is of each of those.
Because including the sidewalks, I guess on Sheridan it's 30, but you don't have really the sidewalks detailed out. Is it 18 or 20?
I believe it's 20, but I don't want to misspeak, so I'd like to double-check that I wasn't able to get through with the architect that's sitting on it. So I will find out for you.
And I believe Giles is even narrower than Sheridan.
We'll find out, but nonetheless, going to the heart of the issue, which I think is the turnaround, the issue is vetted tremendously with the fire department, who accepted it, but no problems with the condition, they approved the request. And there is no parking on either side of Sheridan.
People do park, though.
But, yeah, they park, probably because there's a vacant lot on our side of the lot, the street. I understand that our lot's also been a de facto parking lot for the train station for the best 30 years as well, despite everybody's efforts to keep everybody off, but when people come to pick up people at the train station, they had been pulling onto the lot for the best few decades. So that will change, I think, once the developments are built in this housing there. There will be, there are, everybody has driveways, everybody has an opportunity to pull into the driveway and turn around, and there should be no other traffic coming down the block other than people that reside on the block, and everybody has an ability to pull in off of the street and turn around. And I think, as I said, the fire department's supporting the application with the roadways at their current width, whatever they may be.
Well, I just wanted to know, you know, if you complied with the DOT request, what would that look like?
I think we did a plan already for the DOT request.
I don't know, I don't see anything.
I don't think there was a request. This is the request to have the turnaround at the end of Sheridan?
Yeah, the turnaround. We can certainly do that one for you and show you what gets impacted, obviously the house on the end would be severely impacted by it.
Commissioner Montanez, you also mentioned something else yesterday, right?
Well, I thought that if you made this a row of attached homes, then you would have room for the turnaround, and that was sort of like another option.
Right, but I happen to agree with the chair, I was in the review session yesterday, in the sense that it's a trade-off, because then you're addressing the quality, you know, the style of homes that are there. This was well-supported at the community board, I mean, we got a vote of 30 to 0, all in support of it. Was not approved the first time, I heard yesterday at the review session, the referral of the...
So we've received a recents and community...
You should have one from November, I'll find out when it was, I think it was in November or December was our meeting, and we just called over this morning to confirm my memory, and they affirmed it. But it was supported unanimously. They were much happier with it than they were the commercial that they rejected outright, which was the first iteration. So they have, they like the design of it, but I understand your concerns, I could develop a plan for you if that would address your request. You'd be happy to.
Yes.
We'd be happy to do that.
You'll have to go to DOT to get a builder's pavement plan, won't you?
Correct, yes.
Is that going to be an issue since this is not what they want to see?
No, we don't believe that's going to be an issue at all, they don't, yeah, this is a request, there's a discretionary request, it's not a requirement.
Okay.
I have something here from the community board from 2013 that says they disapproved it.
It might have been from the earlier iteration of the application, but they supported it 30 in favor. That was, it might have been in early 2013.
Okay.
That you have that paperwork from, it was, the application started about then, so, but I'll give you the evidence, I'll give you the copy of the community board's resolution.
I know they've sometimes taken a position that they don't support GCL applications, but I don't know when this was refashioned, as you know, into homes, maybe they took a position and we haven't received it, so if you have it, if you could pass it along.
We'll show.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Hinkson?
On your, on your sections through the site, I think you include the widening lines, but you don't include the easement line, so if you could just add that in...
Be happy to.
That would be good.
Any other questions?
No.
Any speakers on this item? All right, so you're going to get back to us, revise the financials, and show us the turnaround and the, what, how the site plan would be affected by that?
Right, as well as the community board recommendation and to amend the sections to include the easement.
Okay, good. So if you can submit to us on July 1st, we can continue the hearing on July 15th.
Thank you.
Item number 37, 29913BZ, 4299 Highland Boulevard, Staten Island, the office of Eric Palatnik.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We, once again, we attended your review session yesterday.
Yes, go ahead.
I think the most substantive question, or one of the more substantive questions in addition to beefing up the character finding, was addressing the parking. I believe that a discussion was raised about whether the parking was required at the cellar level. It's our opinion that you're not required to comply with the parking at the cellar level, and that's due to the, which I could submit later, I have copies of it with me here, but section 25-31 specifically refers to developments as having to comply with the parking requirement, and because this doesn't fall into the definition of a development, and because it pre-existed and predated the adoption of the current zoning regulations requiring parking, it would be our position that it's grandfathered. But, having said that, all the parking calculations are done, including the cellar. So the, there's, I think the exact number of parking spaces is 12 that we have, I'm looking through the architect right now, but we accommodate all the space within the cellar in the parking calculations. And Roger Marase, the project architect, is here today to answer any specific questions about that. So even though we don't believe we're required to comply with that, we do comply with that. The other thing related to the parking is the upstairs apartment, which has a required parking calculation typically of 1.5, but in this case, again, that predated the zoning that's in place, and it was assigned a 1 when it was built, and that's what they're concurring with. All these calculations, by the way, were reviewed with the Department of City Planning also during a review process for the authorization for the curb cut on Richmond Avenue that's currently being proposed in the application, which is under concurrent application at city planning. And that also goes, I believe, to the question yesterday of the request to, of the potential to do a turnaround in the rear of the property, I think that the question was raised, why don't we connect the two?
Right.
And that was also discussed with city planning, and they wanted to, one of the findings is to minimize traffic onto the side streets. So they liked the idea that it was not connected in the rear because traffic wouldn't flow through. So before I go too far into deep into that issue, just to stick with the parking count in general, we believe we are required, compliant with all the parking requirements, we signed one for the parking space for the residential apartment, and we believe the rest of it complies with the count that would be required if the cellar was counted.
Let me get this straight, you're saying that your existing proposal includes the cellar space?
Yes, it does. And Roger Marase, the project architect, is here, and he could walk you through the calculations that he used to arrive at that if he'd like.
Okay, I mean, I'll just, you know, check it, but I didn't think it did.
Would the icon just speak for a second, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Roger Marase, for Joseph Marase, architect. The cellar was included in the calculations, and as per zoning, it's one space per 400 square feet of medical use, and so it's 10 spaces required because the proposed square footage is just over 4,000, and so there's 10, and then one more for residential, so 11 onsite spaces in total.
Okay, so the 4,000 square feet of community facility space is, that is, that's the ground floor as well as, the first floor as well as the cellar?
Yes.
I thought of, okay, I was confused by that.
Yes.
Okay, so it requires 10 spaces?
10, correct.
And you're proposing 11?
11.
Commissioner Hinkson, I know you had some concerns.
Yeah, could you just check your numbering? I think you actually skip a number on your, on your plan, so it was a little confusing to me because I went from, you know, 1, 2, 3, I think it skips 4 and goes to 5, 6, 7.
It's weird.
So I think it's 12 of 19.
Commissioner Montanez?
There are four is behind the long building.
Oh, okay.
If you weren't there.
Okay, it's hidden. Thank you. Also, could you just make sure that on your plans you indicate that that breezeway is an existing, you know, illegal structure? I think on some of it you just say it's an existing breezeway, but it's what we're legalizing.
Right, I...
So just make sure that it's clear on all of, all of your drawings.
Yes.
All right, are there any other questions?
Well, I have a question regarding details of the perimeter fencing.
Right, and landscaping.
The landscaping, if you could detail what you're proposing.
Sure.
I'm not sure if the fencing that exists is all uniform, but it should be something, you know, a reasonable, nice screening to the residential properties.
Okay, we can do that.
All right, Commissioner Oddly-Brown, you had a question, was there signage?
Oh, yes, could you just tell us whether there's any signage proposed for this site?
Oh, yes. Could you just tell us whether there's any signage proposed for this site?
There is...
There's existing signage.
There's existing signage for the medical office displaying the name of the doctor who resides there.
But nothing's going to change, since you're making this a bigger kind of enterprise.
Nothing's going to change.
And that signage is grandfathered?
Yes.
Okay, because the regulations for community facility signage is very limited, so, and it seems like it exceeds that, but it pre-existed.
Yes.
Do you find out about that?
Sure.
Just want to make sure it's...
No, I can look into the signage, yes.
There's also a large awning with signage.
Right, with the sign. That's the one I'm talking about, actually.
Okay, right, correct.
That's a legal sign.
Right. We can address that, yes.
Also, I forgot to mention the lighting, whatever lighting you propose, where it's located, how it's going to not, you know, bother the adjacent residential properties.
Correct, the exterior lighting.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Just one quick question. Is the residential space actually used as residential space?
It's vacant right now, but it's intended to be used as residential. There's no tenant in there, but...
There's no tenant there now?
There's no tenant there right now.
None of the doctors?
None of the doctors are up there. It's empty right now, but it's intended to be recaptured and utilized again.
As residential?
As residential.
The community facility use will not expand into that?
No, no intention for that at all.
Okay, are there any speakers on this item? Yes, please come forward. Yes, yes, it is. Please come forward. Be given three minutes? Okay.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is George Blanchard. I live on Winchester Avenue. I've been there for thirty-five years. The doctors have been, the facility has been good neighbors, and I just wanted to express that as an opinion. I've had no problems with them whatsoever.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nice to get somebody to speak and support. Thank you for taking the trip, Dan.
All right. If there are no other questions and speakers, we can continue the hearing. Why did you submit on July 8th, and we can have the hearing on July 22nd?
If I may ask...
I'm sorry?
Unfortunately, I'll be out of town on July 22nd and 29th.
I guess we can move it up, July 1st and July 15th.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. Saved my vacation.
Yes.
Item number thirty-eight, calendar number three, twenty-four thirteen BZ, seventy-eight thirty-two, one hundred and thirty-eighth Street, Queens, Sheldon Lobel.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel PC for the applicant. Madam Chair, we have a special permit application under seventy-three six-two-one. The application documents evidence the satisfaction of the findings. Essentially, we are asking for waivers of floor area and open space. We are within the required maximums of the rule. Under the rule, we are permitted to go to ten percent over our permitted FAR, which in an R2 would allow you to go from a point five to a point five-five. The enlargement here would amount to a point five-one. And the reduction in floor area, I'm sorry, the reduction in open space is permitted to be ninety percent of what is required, which would permit us to go from a one point five to a one point three-five. We're going to one point three-six. The local community board, Community Board Eight of Queens, voted unanimously thirty-three zero in favor. The Queens Board President approved this as well. It essentially what amounts to a very modest enlargement of the home. The owner is seeking to fill in the flooring over an existing open space in a family room in order to create a bedroom and additional bathrooms for the family. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Some renovation has already, had taken place. Was that based on permits that were filed?
It was. There was a longstanding home at the premises dating back to the 1950s, at least that's when the CVO was from. There were renovations by the current owner since the time of purchase, so those began in 2011 pursuant to an open application at DOB. There were a number of alterations not involving floor area. And essentially, there was a ZRD with regards to the balcony, which was permitted at the site, but not permitted to be enclosed. And so those alterations took place, and now they're simply seeking to fill in that floor area. The footprint and the shell of the building does not change.
All right, but the photographs that you provided, the building's still under construction, right? Has it been completed, and they're just filling in the space?
They're just filling in the space now.
So the building's...
Substantially completed.
Okay, maybe these were old photographs. Commissioner Hanksen, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I just needed a little clarity on that exterior sort of porch area that is the subject of the reconsideration, and whether or not there was actually a balcony within that area. And I just questioned if there was a balcony there, would that be subject to floor area, because it might not necessarily be fifty percent?
What I would do is I would submit the ZRD to the board and have the project architect do a letter clarifying that. It was essentially permitted to be an open balcony. And that was pursuant to permits, I think that they were obtained in 2012. There was this open application from 2010. Since that time, there were these five A1s alterations that were approved, and the last of which is this one where we seek to fill in the floor area. But that was a...
Yeah, because it looked like actually at the second floor, there was a...
Yeah, I think it is a little bit confusing.
Yeah.
But we can submit.
Clarify that.
Sure.
And then also, this house has an attic, and I don't think we got an attic plan.
You're correct. We'll provide an attic plan.
All right, any other questions? Any speakers on this item? We can continue the hearing.
Does Madam Chair possibly wish to allow us to potentially close and grant on that date, considering that this is a relatively small amount of square footage, and we hope to provide the board with adequate documentation regarding the balcony?
All right, we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, why don't you submit on July 1st, and we can have the hearing on July 15th?
July 15th.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Item number thirty-nine, calendar number fifteen fourteen BZ, twelve dash oh-three, one hundred and fiftieth Street, Queens, Davidoff, Hutcher, etc.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. I would appreciate if you would kindly second-call the matter. I'm just waiting for a member of the school board who's running late.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Item number forty, calendar number twenty-seven fourteen BZ, four ninety-six Broadway, Manhattan, Sheldon Lobel.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel PC for the applicant. Here today on four ninety-six Broadway, first would want to introduce Sheridan Paulson, the project architect, and Barbara Cohen from Robert B. Paul's, who performed the financial analysis. The property is on Broadway. It is one of twenty-two lots located on Broadway between Broom and Spring Streets. Of these lots, on the ground floor, all of them are commercial. So obviously, we have approached the board in previous applications for ground floor commercial use. We feel that that ground floor commercial use is merited here for a number of reasons. We have an existing building which is obsolete for light manufacturing. Most importantly, though, the footprint is, and the layout is really ineffective for a light manufacturing use. We provided the board with statistical information with regards to this site. The site is approximately twenty-two feet wide, and is approximately twenty-two hundred feet in lot area. The lot area of the site puts it within, in the surrounding one-thousand-foot radius, within the lowest twenty percent of lots in this area. And the width of the property at twenty-two and some odd feet puts it within the lowest ten percent. Those two factors together puts it in the lowest nine percent, as far as a combination of those factors. And as is the case with the board, we did further analysis and determined that of those remaining, approximately twenty-five properties, I think our papers may have said twenty-two, will provide the documentation. But of those properties, a full twenty-five out of twenty-seven, let's say, so a very overwhelming percentage is commercial use. I know that there was some questions regarding the legality of that commercial use. Most of those are legal commercial uses. I think the number is approximately eighteen or nineteen of those uses are either legal per CVO or pre-CVO buildings. And then there's a number where the certificates of occupancy do not evidence a legal use. But as far as the character is concerned, the area is obviously overwhelmingly commercial, and the floor plate really does lend itself to this retail use, which we are seeking to legalize, as well as to allow in the cellar of the building. I'd be happy to answer any questions, as well as Ms. Paulson and Ms. Cohen.
Commissioner Montanaz, I know you had raised a concern about the survey...
Well, I had raised the question about if the evidence is that twenty-two or twenty-five of these are commercial properties, then the question is they shouldn't be illegal. So, you know, I would like to see something documenting which ones are legal and which ones aren't.
Yes, we'll be happy to provide that.
All right, I know Commissioner Ottley-Brown had a few questions related to the financials. So if Ms. Cohen can come up? Barbara Cohen, Robert B. Paul's, Elsie.
Hi. The first question I had had to do with the site value, which was based on existing buildings. And it looks like from your comps that some of your existing buildings actually have retail on the first floor, and your site value should not be based on existing buildings that have retail on the first floor, because that's what you're seeking to legalize. So the legal condition is to not have retail on the first floor, and I believe having retail on the first floor makes the building more valuable. So I'd like to see comps where you don't have retail use on the first floor.
Okay, well, first of all, all these buildings are in the M-15B zone, and so if there is retail, it's not permitted and is illegal. The other issue is that the...
But that's not necessarily true, that if it's there, it's illegal, because it's an M-15...
Well, I can double-check their CFOs, so that I can do. The other thing was that the values were not, you know, they weren't based on the rental income, you know, of the buildings themselves. You know what I mean? That the values were not generated from the commercial...
But in a way, it was, because if you have a sale based on the fact that you can have retail on that first floor, which is going to give you more income, that property would sell at a higher price. What does that sound?
And I'll look back at the individual buildings and whether they have legal retail in there as well. But if it's illegal and someone pays a higher price, you know, it's still illegal. But certainly happy to take another look at the details of each.
Okay, and the next question has to do with your retail comparables. If you look at your retail comparables, the first two seem like they're most probably comparable. However, if you look to the last three comparables, they're not in Soho proper. They're not located on a primary commercial strip, even though one of them does have an address of Broadway. It's south of Canal Street. So to get a better read on the potential income for the retail spaces, it would be great if you use comparables that are actually located in Soho, preferably on that stretch of Broadway, or as close to it as possible.
Okay, I mean, we did make adjustments for location, but I'll be happy to...
Right, but if you look at your actual comparables, your first two that are closer, well, your first one, which is actually closest, Broom Street, your income on that is approximately three hundred dollars a square foot. Your last three comparables, your income is a hundred dollars a square foot. So there really is a large differential there. So I'd rather see comparables in Soho around that.
I mean, the chair will find, we can find.
Yeah, that would be great. And then if you could just clarify whether or not the actual retail leases that you're quoting are including the seller's storage?
Sorry, including...
Are you including the seller's storage in that actual price per square foot?
Okay, usually not, but okay.
And if so, just, right, give us the calculation for that, because you didn't then separate it out either?
Yeah, because typically it's based on the first floor. But I'll specify, clarify, elaborate a little more about, because I'll get new comparables, and we'll see what the details are.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. All right, I have just a question. I know that you received a CVA from, I think it was 2008, if I'm not mistaken. I just want to make sure that the sunglass hut, which is shown as the signage on your proposed drawings, and I guess is what is there right now, is in accordance with the CVA? Do you need to revise that?
I would be happy to have Ms. Paulson address.
Sheridan Paulson of PKSB Architects. We were not the architects for the CVA issued in 2008, but the sign does fit within the spacing and height that was approved under the CVA. I consulted with John Weiss, deputy counsel to the commission, and he agreed that the previously approved CVA was covering this particular sign.
Thank you, Ms. Paulson.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? Any speakers? Right, no speakers. We will continue the hearing. Yes, you need a couple of weeks?
That's all.
Well, why don't we, we're going to set a submission date for July 8th, and we'll have the hearing on July 22nd.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Item number forty-one, calendar number thirty-nine fourteen BZ, ninety-seven Reed Street, Manhattan, Francis R. Angelino.
Good morning, Commissioners. Frank Angelino, on behalf of Xcede Fitness, to respond directly to...
Yes, please.
...question raised. Xcede's operation includes the use of independent trainers, as they do on the original fourteen seventy-seven Third Avenue at eighty-third Street operation, which was approved by this board two years ago. The hours of operation are the hours of operation. Xcede has their own staff, and these people are basically the independent trainers come in only during the hours of operations. So the proposed hours of operation, five thirty AM through nine PM, Mondays through Friday, and seven to seven on Saturday and Sunday, those will be the only hours of operation. No one else will have a key, and no one else will be in the space.
Because the personal trainers basically work for Xcede Fitness, right?
Yeah, they come in during, only during the hours of operation. The second point, I think, was about incorporating into the statement of facts what was submitted by the architect in the response to the examiner's comments, and that will be done. And we'll do that.
Okay, particularly related to ADA...
Yes, just the architect's letter regarding ADA compliance, just incorporated in your statement.
Yes, and the architect is here, as well as the principal owner, Catherine Goodwin.
Okay. Commissioner Montanaz, you were satisfied?
I think that explains it very well, yes. Thank you.
This is one of those unusual times when the hearing is actually two blocks away from the actual site.
That is true. Any speakers on this item? If there are no speakers, we can close the hearing.
Chair Shrinivasan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanksen?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
You can submit to us on July 8th. We will build this out on July 22nd.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
This is a second call for item number thirty-nine, calendar number fifteen fourteen BZ, twelve oh-three, one hundred and fiftieth Street, Queens, Davidoff, Hutcher, etc.
Good morning again. Ron Mandell, on behalf of the Greek Orthodox Community of White Stone Holy Cross. As noted at yesterday's review session, in consultation with the community board, the applicant has already implemented a number of traffic and parking-related mitigation measures. They include providing a security guard outside the school to facilitate in the pickup and drop-off of students, and they also modified the dismissal time in the afternoon. Currently, well, before the community board hearing, dismissal is at three PM, which coincided with the CUSAC School across the street, the Quality Services for the Autism Community School. And the school thought it best, based upon comments in the community board, to move dismissal for the pre-k and kindergarten kids to two forty-five and two fifty, and then the first graders, second graders, and third graders to three o'clock. And they've seen a big difference... And they've seen a big difference in the movement of traffic. It's obviously helped a lot in terms of coordinating with the CUSAC students across the street. They also moved the buses, which were formerly parked on 112th, I'm sorry, on 150th Street to 12th Avenue, to help relieve congestion along 150th, because the CUSAC buses also park on 150th.
And that's already been implemented?
Yes. In addition, after the hopeful expansion, project is completed, the 2 trailers that are on the parking lot across the street, which is controlled by the, by the church, the 2 trailers, which currently has 50 students, will be moved, because the students can be moved into the enlarged school facility, and the applicant is already committed to providing the 6 accessory parking spaces, which are triggered by the enlarged school on the church parking lot across the street. And the architect has confirmed that those 6 spaces could be provided on that site. In addition, the community board asked that the school install signs to help also facilitate traffic in the area, entry sign on 12th Avenue and an exit sign from the church lot on 150th. So, the school agreed to do that come September.
Any other questions?
How many school buses do you use currently?
There are only 2 school, there are 2 small school buses, which in total transport 5 students. There's a handicap bus, which transports 2 students, and the other school bus transports 3 students.
And now they're going to be coming on 12th Avenue?
They already park on 12th Avenue.
Okay, and then, we got some correspondence that, it appeared that a lot of parents come to pick up their students. Is there any plan for parents to wait for students, or?
The, the goal is, once the trailers can be moved across the street, the goal is to move as many parents as possible onto the church lot across the street, and that was the purpose of having those entry and exit signs on the church lot across the street to help maneuver traffic away from the intersection of 150th and 12th, which is where the CUSAC buses line up. The CUSAC school across the street has a significant amount of buses, and the reality is that the students who board and exit those buses, it takes them some time to get on and off the bus because their, because their physical conditions. That coincides obviously with the retail district down the block, and so, you know, there is some congestion at the peak hours in the morning and more so in the afternoon. It's come down somewhat with the staggered dismissal times, and hopefully, once the trailers move and more parents can park on the church lot across the street, it'll help make things a little smoother.
But there are just 6 spots across the street, correct?
There's actually more than that. I mean, the 6, the 6 required accessory spots can be accommodated from a zoning perspective in terms of, you know, the aisle widths and so across the street, but actually, across the street, you can legally fit 47 cars, and at 3:00, when school's being dismissed, the church is usually not, you know, visited by congregants, and so there's more than 6 spots available. There's a lot more than 6 spots.
So, the idea is that the parents drive into the parking lot and wait there to pick up their, their children?
Correct, correct.
So, you're going to provide us with some plans to show all this?
Yes.
Okay.
It's okay, so, Commissioner Martinez, you just want them to lay out a plan where it shows where these parking-
Right, it sounds very reasonable. It sounds like the obvious solution.
Right, right, okay, and-
It's not a problem, go by a parking layout diagram.
Parking layout, and it can identify where the signage is and what the signage is as well.
Sure.
All right, any other questions?
Does the board have any concerns about closing this hearing?
No.
No?
Okay, we can close this hearing.
Thank you.
You can submit on July 1st, we can vote this out on July 15th.
Okay, if I may, Ms. Zuzias, Dr. Zuzias, on the school board, would like to say a few-
Yes, please.
Words. Thank you.
State your name for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Katerina Zuzias, and I'm Paris Council President for Holy Cross of Whitestone. On behalf of our entire community, I would like to convey our sincere appreciation for considering our application. This school has been a longstanding dream of ours for over 38 years, and hopefully, with your assistance, it will finally come to fruition. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other issues, we can close the hearing. Chair Shuny Vasan? Aye. Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez? Aye. Commissioner O'Leary Brown? Aye. It's a decision July 1st. This concludes the public-
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. This concludes the public hearing for June 10th, 2014.